I'd like to call this regular city council meeting of March 9th, 2015, to order. We would like to start the pledge of allegiance, but if you don't mind, I would like to have a few seconds of, no, you can stand, a few seconds, a moment of silence for a valiant man from Denmark. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With that roll call shows that all of council is present and we have department heads, of course, one Allen Medical. And we would like to look at the approval of the amendments for February 23rd.
I move minutes.
Second.
For the discussion, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? And then approval of bills, did anybody spot anything of interest?
I move the bills.
For the discussion, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Now approval of the agenda, we may need some additions or deletions, Tim or Chief, who's, you want to take the directive?
Mr. Mayor, we would like to add one item under old business, which would be the second reading of the sign ordinance. Both the city planner and the city attorney are prepared to speak on that issue.
Okay, we'll make that number two then.
Also, Mr. Mayor, I've provided council with three separate attorney-client privileged communications. I don't know if council wants to entertain any of those in a closed session.
Under the pretense of what, what?
Eight H.
He knows it by heart.
Eight H, yes. To discuss the legal issues addressed in those correspondence.
Yeah, I'd be in favor of that.
Is consensus?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, then let's go ahead and put that after council comments.
Is it all three things, or is it just one thing? What is, what's going to be discussed in council comments, council's closed session? Is it all?
Well, there's one that relates to a project involving the acquisition of a real estate interest.
Right.
There's one.
I know the other one.
That pertains to an aspect of Volunteer Park.
That's it, okay.
And there's a personnel issue.
All right. I'm good.
Motion, or I move we approve the amended agenda.
Second.
And further discussion, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post? Public comment, at this time, if anybody wishes to speak, they may do so on any item that's not listed on the agenda. State your name and address, please.
Sir, I'd thank the mayor and the city council, my name is Nick Kennedy, I am the district representative for Congressman Trot. I wanted to come down and introduce myself, hopefully you'll see more of me. What we're trying to do is Congressman Trot is looking to be abreast of what's happening here in the city of South Lyon, to carry on his service of, a commitment of service to you guys. If there's something that comes up, you all have my card there, please feel free to use it often. For anybody that's listening, our Congressman Trot's phone number is area code 248-528-0711. If you didn't already know it, Congressman Trot's on the Judiciary Committee and the Foreign Affairs Committee, his office in DC, he's usually back in district on a Monday or a Friday, and every six weeks he has a week in which to be in district also. So, if you have events, as I was telling Chief, please let us know, way in advance, you know, like I said, if I can get him out here for things like that, I'd love to have him be here himself and, you know, take care of any business personally, but you have my card, like I said, if there's anything that we can do for you, please feel free to ask, that's what we're here for.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I did think it was nice to see him reaching out the activity in Wixom and now it's scheduled in Canton, I thought that was great.
Well, we're gonna, you know, do this a lot, so tomorrow morning, I had arranged for all the townships actually to come over and have breakfast up in Milford area, Milford Township, and I'm gonna do that also with the cities over this side of town, too. You know, I can get them out, unfortunately, it's usually first thing in the morning, you know, and it's for people that aren't used to getting up at 6 o'clock to go to breakfast, it's just not a good thing, but we want to be here and help out, so like I said, we want to hear what you have to say, it's very important to us. Thank you very much.
Evening council, my name is Tim McClory, I am your representative risk manager for the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, and usually when you see, when you see me standing here, it's usually a good thing, and tonight's no different. I'm here to congratulate you on, on your choice to continue and to participate in the Michigan Municipal Risk Management Authority, just want to remind everybody that it's not an insurance company, there's no stockholders, there's no dividend checks being sent out to third parties, our owners and our stockholders are you, the member, and the MMR May last year gave away just under $35 million of net asset, excess net assets back to the membership. Your portion of that I have with me. This year, and this is, this is for last year's portion, this year they just announced the largest distribution ever, which is a little bit over $45 million back to the membership. You'll be getting that probably next fall, after you guys, after your renewal, but that brings a total amount given back to our members since 2006, around $195 million back to the membership. So I congratulate you as owners of the program, as, as, as one of our members, I appreciate it, and I have here a check I'd like to present to the chief, his acting city manager, a check for $33,908, so congratulations.
Very good.
I also want to commend these, your staff, they keep pumping the risk avoidance program applications, I know a couple just got approved last week as well, and so I encourage, encourage, you know, to all your department heads to continue to send the risk avoidance applications, and if there's any of your department heads that need to be accredited or certified, MMR May has started a cap program, which is accreditation, is a certification and accreditation program, where we will partner with you up to 75% of the educational needs of your department that needs the certification, so, anyway, I think I spoke, I think I've used up my time, but thank you very much, I appreciate it, we'll talk to you guys.
Thank you.
Actually, that much bought you three more minutes.
Yeah, it means more.
Hello, everyone, Ryan Lehrer, 716 Grand Court, I'm here tonight to present, I'm here on behalf of the USS Silverside Submarine Museum in Muskegon, Michigan, and I know people book their trip sometimes ahead of time from Memorial Day, so I'm getting this out of kind of a, head of schedule here. We are having a lost boat ceremony down in Muskegon and for Memorial Day, and currently we have quite a few projects coming up, and we're just inviting the public to come down and get some nice tours for the holiday and see the lost boat ceremony, where we honor all the 52 submarines that were lost throughout the war, and we have guest speaker, last year we had Senator Carl Levin, but since he's, since retired, I do not know who would be filling that position or who, what guest speaker we will have, I'm sure they're working on that at this point in time, and we also had a senator with him as well that spoke on behalf as well as Carl Levin. This is put on annually every year, they've been doing this for the last 15 years, and it's done by the local sub vets that have been doing this for tradition, it's usually done in Hawaii, but there's other, they're done at different submarine, submarines that are located throughout the country that have, you know, tours and stuff like that, and so we do that at the Silversides every year, and there's also a Coast Guard Cutter, McLean there, and you can come down and see the Coast Guard Cutter and take a tour of it. Our maintenance manager, Jack Fisher, just put in brand new teak flooring, it looks brand new, which is obviously, you know, been a lot of painstaking work, and this is a nonprofit organization, so it's all done by contributions from people like us, there's no federal grants or anything like that that help keep the Silversides working, and keep in mind, if the kids do come take a tour, all levels are, levers are operating on the submarine, and it is in working function, so it is, you know, it, please come and enjoy a tour and see what the silent service and what the men sacrificed for their country, and you can also go to their website, silver sides museum.org, and their telephone number is 231-755-1230, I will be there from Friday till Monday, and if anybody comes in, they can see the front desk and ask for me, and I'll be happy to give you a personal tour of the submarine, or the McLean, whichever one you prefer, I'm more knowledgeable on the Silversides than the McLean. However, my father did serve in the Coast Guard, and some of my family also served in the Coast Guard as well, so unfortunately, I'm just not as knowledgeable in that aspect of the tours, but I am very knowledgeable in the Silversides, and I'd really like to give you guys a tour in the public, and I hope you guys come down, and I recommend the Comfort Inn Hotel over in Whitehall, Michigan, it's about 12 miles from Silversides, they have great accommodations, great staff, pool and jacuzzi for the kids, and just a great location and a great time, not to take away from all the festivities, as Harvey pointed out to me earlier, going on here in South Lyon, but anybody that's taking the kids, it's a great informational tour, and, you know, I welcome the, welcome somebody from South Lyon to come down and get a tour, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Okay, we can move on to old business, and that's the revised PD agreement for the Knolls of South Lyon.
Mr. Mayor and council, so this is the last item requiring council approval related to the Knolls of South Lyon development, it's the plan development agreement, this is authorized under the plan development portion of the zoning ordinance, and I'm going to run through a little bit of, and highlight some of the areas that have been at issue and negotiated through the course of this, I'm going to try not to spend too much time, this process started back in 2003, there's been a preliminary site plan approved and a final site plan approved, the, this will be a site condominium, it will be limited to 88 units, in section three, this outlines the development documents, which will control the development, most specifically, it includes the approved final site plan, section six addresses the water and sanitary sewer systems, and I'm going to get to the timing of dedication, these will be public and dedicated to the public, the section seven deals with the storm water, portions of that will be dedicated to the public, most, the obvious ones are the, are the portions located within the road right of way, section eight deals with the roads, these will be concrete roads per this agreement and the developers agreement, the timing for dedication of roads, storm sewer, sanitary and water will be at the 80% completion, meaning they have to get final certificates of occupancy for 80% of all units in the development regardless of phasing, my rough calculation of that is that will be 70 units, and that was an issue that was negotiated out. In section 10, this specifies that the open areas, which will be included specifically by drawing and by legal description and shown on the final site plan must be preserved as open space. In section 11, this is the additional crime, it's, this is some of the minor issues or kind of groups of issues dealing with units, exterior materials, roof shingles, colors, product variety, a requirement of two, minimum of two street trees, it addresses the type of road curbs, which was an issue, and it also provides for how changes and alterations to the development documents, which were referred to earlier, might be, might be made, whether they are minor changes, which can be done administratively, or major changes need to come back for planning commission and or council. Section 12 deals with the maintenance obligations, this is if the, something in the development that is common is not maintained, the city has rights to go in, provide notice that it needs to be repaired, and if, under the certain circumstances, the city can go in and make those improvements and collect the cost of those improvements. Section 14 deals with the financial assurances, one of the big issues here was the developer requested that it not be required to place financial assurance to guarantee completion of the water, sewer and roadways, the city agreed to that, the condition of that is that there be no building permits issued until those common improvements are completed, inspected and approved by the city. The approval there is not the dedication or acceptance of dedication, it's simply that these are built according to plan and that they're functioning and so forth, the dedication is dealt with otherwise through the 80% completion requirement. There are a number of other financial guarantees, notably the maintenance and repair, this will apply to both water, sewer and road, once it is accepted for dedication, they have to place a 25% deposit, so 25% of the cost of those improvements, and that will run for two-year period to ensure the workmanship of those utilities. Hopefully with the approval process that's dealt with for getting a building permit, hopefully that won't be a problem. The site restoration, so construction traffic will be across, traveling these roads, and it's most related to the, to the roadway. If there are damages to curbs or other portions of the road or other improvements, this guarantee, the developer has an obligation to make those repairs and restore the site, in the event that they refuse, this money is on deposit, so the city can make those repairs, and if that money were not to be enough to complete the repairs, we can always go after the developer as they have an obligation to take care of all those costs. Section 16 lists the reimbursable costs related to this process, so the legal planning, engineering costs can be recovered and paid for by the developer, and section 19 has some additional restrictions and conditions on use, this specifies again the 88 units, the minimum unit size must be 7,200 square feet, it outlines the acreage for the open space, and it requires an asphalt paved pathway throughout the development that will connect with rail trail system and can be used by the public, it also requires the second access point via Kestrel Court, and it requires that the island currently existing in Kestrel Court be removed, the area be paved, subject to city approval, and that will be at the developer's expense. The remainder, there are some miscellaneous and boilerplate type language, at this time, unless Carmen, the planning consultant, has some additional input, it's my understanding that the developer is in agreement with this, and if this plan development agreement meets with council's approval, I would recommend approving the document, authorize the mayor and clerk to execute it, the question I have for you is whether you want to condition that on city attorney approval to deal with any very minor spelling or correction issues as we finalize exhibits and get it ready for signature. Any questions?
How would any of those simple corrections, would there be any vulnerability to not attending to those?
Theoretically, it would have to come back for council approval, even for the, for some of those minor things, so although I've, I've been through it, we've provided this document recently to developer's attorney, I haven't heard anything back or noticed any changes, we've dealt with this for quite a while, there would really be minor housekeeping issues, so I don't, I don't, anything that would be major or have any influence, impact on this, on the party's positions would have to come back to council anyway.
Do you want to address this letter about the construction traffic?
Yes, actually, there, one of the residents on Kestrel Court had sent a little missive that wanted us to take note that her interest is that to limit the construction traffic to the Mill Street entrance, to try to avoid as much dust and mayhem through Kestrel Court as is possible, so just assured her I'd pass that along to everybody, so I don't, I don't really see that being a big problem, so.
More direct rather than.
It won't end up being, you know, unilateral limitation, but the majority of traffic being on Mill Street, I think is important.
Yeah, I can't speak to whether that entrance would, location would be used for construction access, but if council wishes, you could make that a condition of the approval of the, of the agreement.
I would hope that the builder would try to abide by that request, I don't want him being delayed anymore, I'd like to see us take care of this tonight.
Well, and logistically, I mean, this isn't a big application, most of the stuff is going.
So I say that, he could just, he's here, he's hearing it, and I think he knows what we're talking about.
Yeah, Tim, just one thing, you address, we talked about putting up a model, but not able to, we dedicated.
Right, so, well, there's a provision, I believe it's, I thought it was section 20, but it allows for the developer to build a model unit on, or model home on unit 88, which is down near the entrance by Mill Street, they would be allowed to use, get occupancy on a temporary basis for sales office purposes only, we've talked in, with the others, with the developer and their attorney, that would, that would have to be code compliant in order to get the temporary certificate of occupancy for sales purposes, so the sewer and water and roadway would all have to be completed to get access and use of that building, but that is something that they requested and we found acceptable as far as a sales office location.
Well, we had talked about that in court session, yeah.
Just, we'd still, we'd still, but I didn't want to thank you for pulling my, you know, far as using Kestrel Court, the only time I see it could really be used as well would go in the bridge across, you know, from Mill Street, we're going to need to get around and get material to that and whatnot, so there'll be some traffic there, but we'll try to limit it, we'll try to do things that are kind of sense, we won't be annoying or trying to say.
It's certainly not more convenient for big trucks to try to navigate around to get to that court, so, you know.
I wouldn't disagree with that.
It's not going to be the choice.
All right, so the motion, then you want us, that we need to entertain is whether or not we're going to approve the revised plan development?
Yes, the motion would be whether to approve the Knolls of South Lyon Plan Development Agreement as presented, and authorize the mayor and clerk to sign it and execute it. And if there are any other conditions that you would place on that, we've provided for a way to deal with those before execution.
What's that, Javier? So that's part of the motion?
For example, if you wanted to restrict construction traffic to the Mill Street entrance, you could place that as a condition of the approval, and I believe we talked with the developer's attorney about this, they didn't want to be, have any conditions at this stage unilaterally imposed on them, so we would bring that back to them before execution, to make sure they're, they accept those and agree to those terms. But I think you've, you've been apprised of how this, the issues involved in this matter for some time, I don't see any new issues other than that.
All right, then, if we do approve this motion, then as far as limiting, I just want to make sure, I mean, at some point, if it becomes an issue with construction traffic on this court, I mean, is that an issue that has to come back in front of us, or are we pretty much signing it away by agreeing to this tonight?
Unless you place the restriction on it, there is no restriction.
Can I state this?
Could you please come to the microphone, because for the sake of television, they need to hear you.
They say I have a face for radio, so anyway, hi, Paul Oco, what I'm saying is that the Kestrel Court, there's going to be a lot of workers, and with their pickup trucks and their vans, if they're heading out to the east, part of the reason that we asked, or you asked for the second access, it would be silly to limit those, what we're talking about is if you want to say, bringing in the big trucks on the Class A road on Mill Street, that would be defining better what I think you're trying to do, because we don't want a guy in a pickup truck who wants to turn left anyway to have to come out Kestrel Court possibly and help impede traffic any more than what you were trying to.
To mitigate whatever traffic is coming out of this development in the process of construction.
Construction.
To limit it to the Mill Street entrance unless there's no way around it, I mean.
So you want pickups, vans, everything on Mill Street, not just trucks?
During the construction phase, yeah.
Well, the only reason we're bringing this up is I know there's a number of developments where I've seen where they limit access to construction traffic only in one access, and, I mean, we have residents living on this.
That's fine, I just wanted to make sure you wanted everything.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to, I mean, from our point of view, we've seen it done before, I mean, I have many a times where construction.
And we do too.
Okay, and we have that Class A road right there.
Correct.
It's just, it's a road designed for construction traffic.
I just wanted to make sure you wanted trucks and workers' vehicles.
Right, state your name, please.
Ron Cook, Paul's developer, developer, only time we would need, like he said before, is when we're building a bridge across the wetlands, we have to, we won't be able to use Mill Street.
Right.
And the bridge, I don't know if it's going to take us 30 days to build the bridge or whatever, but we got a quite extensive bridge that we're building across there in the wetlands.
All right, so if we put a limitation just for the building of the bridge?
That's fine, I, I totally agree about the one construction, we always do that anyhow, but if we need to get there to build the bridge.
I just needed to define.
Yeah, no, okay.
In the event that.
We've been doing this 30, I've been doing it for 30 years, so we know that you got to be good neighbors to your neighbors, you got, you know, because everything works like this if you're good.
Well, in the event it does get, some, you know, you're going to have muddy days, and then you happen to track a bunch through there, hopefully you can bring in a sweeper to take care of it.
Yeah, we'll probably have us on site, yeah.
We want one on site.
Yeah, Paul's got a broom in the shop, dustpan.
All right, so, so we're okay then if we put that condition on it just for the building of the bridge?
I just wanted to make sure that you.
All right, all right, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
Anybody want this?
Well, I guess I'll make, I'll try, I'll make the motion to approve the revised plan development agreement for the Knolls of South Lyon, subject to the condition of construction traffic allowed to be, or, construction traffic will be allowed to use the court entrance while the bridge is being built, I guess, over the wetlands, does that make any sense?
Limited to Mill Street, save for the bridge.
Other than that, all construction traffic will use, so no street address.
I'll support that.
Oh. Yeah, let me finish. I kind of like the idea in this motion of having the city attorney being able to correct any minor typos or anything like, in the agreement without us having to go bring it back to us, so with that additional condition.
I'll make the motion.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, that will allow us to add that restriction on the construction traffic to Mill Street without bringing it back to you, and then we can execute.
All right, I think I said it.
Very commonsensical.
Did you still want a second then? Glenn, did you still want a second?
I do.
Further discussion, and I guess I'm going to throw something in here quickly, I should have done it sooner, when we talk about taking that island out, there is some nice trees and bushes in there, and I'd hate to see them just be hacked down and gone, and once there's any way we could possibly get those moved to the open lot that we have on Wells and Detroit Street where the old water tower used to be, perhaps to spruce up that lot a little bit, instead of killing off the vegetation, and I think it's a beautiful, I think it's a pretty flowering tree if I'm right, I don't know if it's possible, something like that could be moved, you know, tree scoop and move, that's what I'm saying.
I think it's about six to eight inch tree, it's going to probably take a tandem spade to move one that size, everything, I looked at it just the other day, I kind of thought the same as you, I was just ashamed to do that, I got to look around and see if I can find somebody with a spade that size.
If it's a flowering tree, it might need sun, there's a lot of shade on that other site, you might want to. that other site, you might wanna move it to a park where it gets some sun.
Well, again, it's somewhere in the city, I just, if it could be saved and, you know, I've got a different view on life lately.
The tree is one, I don't know about the bushes, they usually don't survive very good when you, when you dig them out, the bushes.
I don't know.
Well, if you can work something out, it'd be appreciated. Okay, all in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Get to work.
I think there's gonna be some people anxious to move to your, your area.
We're, we're getting really a lot of interest now, we have them advertised, so, I think, I think it should be a very good project. Excited about it, thank you.
Okay, we can move on to the second reading of the sign ordinance. Mr. Carmine can speak to it, our city planner. Davatini, Davatini.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As you may recall, at the last council meeting, we went through the, what we consider minor changes to the new sign ordinance to allow for the use of electronic message signs in the multiple family district for institutional uses, which are spelled out directly in the ordinance language. We've also limited the size of the, overall size of the sign, and I, I think that's pretty much encompasses that we don't have all that many locations that will qualify for this. I know originally this came up at the request of one of the local churches, and when we wrote the ordinance, we really hadn't given a lot of thought to institutional uses that are located on major thoroughfares, which is where this would be, occur, which is Pontiac Trail, ten mile, you know, eleven mile. And so, it is a relatively, there's a relatively small number of properties where this would even apply, but we thought that they are very busy thoroughfares, and they should be able to have some of the same rights that businesses in particular located on those same roads have. But because it is approved by the planning commission, there's also some built-in security there to make sure that we've covered those odd locations that maybe have single-family residential properties next door.
Did you determine whether Pontiac, or, excuse me, Reynolds Suite was a primary arterial?
I, I looked at it, and it is, in the master plan, it is considered, so, it's, yeah.
All right, well, since I made the first motion, I'll make the second motion. I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of the amendment to the City of Southline Ordinance, chapter si, or, chapter seventy, I'm sorry, section seventy-seven.
I'll support that.
Bev supports that. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you.
Well under your, your time that you had forecasted for this to take place, so they can get on their way.
Yep, spring, they can do their building, we're happy for the Methodist church, so they can move on. New business. Use of volunteer park for the Kiwanis Club Easter egg scramble on April fourth, two thousand and fifteen. We have two representatives here, they're hard-working representatives, I might add.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. Phil Wiper from Southline Kiwanis, along with Abe Bayub from Kiwanis, we just ran out from our meeting. But anyway, we are asking for use of the volunteer park. Every year we've helped put on a Easter egg hunt scramble, and we're asking, it's gonna be Saturday, April fourth, from about eleven, I put eleven to two, it's usually over by about one. We're open to have about ten thousand eggs, and the kids come out. Takes about a month of planning and a hundred hours putting it together, and the eggs are picked up in about twenty, twenty minutes.
And that's only because you hold them off a chunk at a time.
Well, the parents gotta be with each group of kids, so, anyway, that's what we're asking, any.
Yep, same with Kiwanis, known for the past seven years, no changes.
Go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion to approve the use of volunteer park on April fourth, two thousand and fifteen, from ten a.m. until two p.m. for the Kiwanis Club Easter egg scramble.
I'll support that.
Further discussion? It's an amazing event to watch. Talk about just the sheer joy of children.
We're hoping the snow's gone.
Yeah, yes. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Thank you. Next, next year, Easter's on March twenty-seventh.
There may be a little snow there.
Thanks, Julie.
Okay, we move on to number two, the first reading amendment to the City of Southline Ordinance, adding regulations concerning the medical use of marijuana and related land uses and activities.
Mr. Mayor and council? I think everybody's aware of the Michigan Medical Marijuana Act. That act allows for the use of medical marijuana by certain people under certain circumstances in compliance with the act. For purposes of this ordinance, it's important for council to know, there are qualifying patients who can use medical marijuana because of their medical condition and use it for their own use. There are also registered caregivers who can provide and, can assist qualifying pa, up to five qualifying patients with the cultivation, growth, and other aspects of the use of medical marijuana. The, the Turbic decision last year indicated that community, local communities cannot prohibit what is authorized under the Michigan Marijuana, Medical Marijuana Act, but it does provide, it opened the door to a recognition that local communities can regulate various aspects of those activities. With that in mind, we've been through the planning commission with this on a couple of different schemes, and after giving it some more thought, there was a, from the planning commission, there was a distinction between the caregiver activities, which allow for cultivating and growing up to seventy-two plants, which would be assisting five patients, and up to twelve plants just by qualifying patients. So it breaks down into caregivers and qualifying patients. And what this scheme does is that this ordinance prohibits medical marijuana use with exceptions. So the caregivers are allowed to grow up in compliance with the act, and that's underlying all of this, is everything related to caregivers and qualifying patients must comply with the act. This really is controlling the location or zoning districts in which the activities are allowed. Caregivers are, will be allowed to have a medical marijuana caregiver growing facility in the I-one and I-two districts, and there are, we'll go through some of the regulations that pertain to that, but they will be in the industrial areas. Qualifying patients can grow up to twelve plants and have the, the allowed, allowable amounts of usable marijuana in their own dwellings. So that's up to the twelve plants, and that will be any residential district, and it's gotta be in compliance with the act. And that's really consistent with what's allowed under the act. So some of the, so there are definitions, there's an intense section, the location in section one oh two four ninety-seven specifically calls out the industrial for caregiver growing facility, and the additional special land use applications in four, section one oh two four ninety-eight, so in addition to, this will be treated as a special land use or a use permitted subject to conditions by the planning commission. So these will be, you get an application for a caregiver growing facility, you have to submit additional information above and beyond what's required for special land use under the zoning ordinance. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time going through those, but we wanna know more about where, where the building is, what the building contains, are there other users, what's your security gonna be, who else might be there, are you a registered caregiver, and we're gonna have to administratively deal with whether we take photocopies of their registration cards because there are confidentiality issues that deal with those cards under the act. And we want, we have to comply with the confidentiality aspects of the act.
And HIPAA rules too, right?
I'm not sure whether medical marijuana affects HIPAA.
I've never thought any kind of medical kind of thing.
So, once you go through that, you have to comply with the sections or the additional requirements in four ninety-nine. And, so only a primary registered caregiver can get a special land use, because the registration for a primary caregiver is individual, only that person can get the special land use. And the general scheme here, or an idea here, is to minimize the number of people that might be going to these growing facilities. It's really supposed to be just the caregiver, and they have to comply with the act. So there is a lot of duplication, there's repetition of what's required under the act. One of the significant issues that, that we came, had to deal with is, this ordinance provides that there is no transfer or distribution of medical marijuana at these growing facilities. The caregiver must deliver or transfer that somewhere else, whether it's to the qualifying patient's home or some other location. But again, that minimizes the number of people that come to these growing facilities, so we don't have any questions about, is somebody actually a qualifying patient, and are they connected through the state's, the LARA Department of Licensing Affairs and so forth, with that caregiver? So that will be done elsewhere. You can't live.
Is it reasonable to limit to one, one person, though? Say they have responsibilities to care for their, whoever they're growing for, and they become ill, is there any kind of language that affords them some alternative personnel?
Unless you are, unless you are a registered caregiver, you cannot possess that, that medical marijuana, whether marijuana in general, it's not just for medical use.
I'm imagining, though, that this is becoming a community pretty quickly, the people that will be involved in this, so the idea of finding someone with the, the appropriate credentials probably won't be a big mystery.
So, and, and that's gonna, that will be worked out in some of the details about what is in the particular location for the growing facility. For example, the marijuana must be in a locked, secure facility. So whether that is deemed the entire building or a smaller portion within a building, for example, one of the issues that might come up is if you have grow lights and a fertilization system, you may have service providers coming to deal with those aspects of that activity. They may be allowed in, but it may depend on whether they're deemed to be in the secured facility, or if it's a smaller area within there that they're allowed to be in. And that's really, you know, the idea here is to make law enforcement, the chief loves me for this, but law enforcement would be the first step in determining whether somebody's in violation of the act itself rather than the zoning ordinance. So there's no, you can't use medical marijuana at these locations, you can't deliver, you must comply with all the building fire codes, with the additional lighting, watering, fertilization, storage of fertilizers or other materials, you have to comply with the code. You will be subject to, or can be subject to, inspection by the police, fire, or building If anything changes with a registered caregiver, they are required to alert the city. In other words, if somebody's card, registration card for being a caregiver expires, and they have a special land use, they have to tell us that they are no longer a caregiver, and we would have to go through a process to revoke that special land use approval.
How about notice for one of their clients, their, their criterion changes?
Well, and this is.
Have any, are we monitoring any of that?
Comes again with privacy.
We are not going to be able to, is, maybe Chief Collins can shed some light on this, I'll try and answer it.
And it might be unnecessary, I mean, if the limitation is seventy-two plants, I guess that's probably the real driving important factor there, so.
Yeah, and I'm not, Chief Collins may be able to shed some light on this, but essentially, if, if there are, if you're over seventy-two plants, you're in violation of the act. If you're somewhere under that, then we would have a basis on which to contact the state department that deals with the registrations and say, is this person a registered caregiver, and how many qualifying patients are connected to them? That would then determine whether they're over or under, or within, in compliance with the limits for the number of plants and usable marijuana. And I think, Chief Collins has indicated to me that this is a fairly rudimentary system, it's not very, they don't get a lot of information through this system.
Not well-developed, yeah. I guess one of the reasons I'm asking is, how, how is it to be determined whether or not, if the guy can't exchange on sight, if he's delivering, how do they, how does anybody know if it's actually a, a person that's registered that's being delivered to, or suddenly he's just got a great cover for being a pot seller, you know?
Well, if he's not, if he's not in the presence of his qualifying, his or her qualifying patient, then it's really a matter of whether they have the, whether they are themselves. So a registered caregiver can also be a qualifying patient, which gets them to the seventy-two.
Correct.
If they are a caregiver, they can be in possession of up to seventy-two plants and the allowable amounts of usable medical marijuana under the act.
I know, I'm talking about when they deliver it to their client.
It, it really would become a question for law enforcement to determine, is everybody registered through the state department, and are they allowed to have this stuff? And is it in the right amounts?
I mean, I don't wanna beat this thing to death, but nonetheless, there's some things that are, it's not really very a closed system, I mean, it seems like there's a lot of loose ends.
But really, the, the under, everything underlying this ordinance is you gotta, you gotta comply with the act.
No, exactly.
So, dealing with the amount of plants and usable marijuana, you have to be in compliance. The act does deal with transportation of this in a vehicle, you can't operate under the influence and all that kind of stuff. So really, it's, it's compliance with the act and law, push it to law enforcement first as far as compliance.
I'm not against the idea of this either, I mean, I think people that need help getting an appetite, I mean, there's a host of things that I think this makes perfect sense to, it's just that the legislature didn't really give us a great deal of help with the way that they've set this up.
It's not a great statute.
Yeah.
Does the compliance of the law that the caregiver needs to follow, is there, is there protections in that law for the caregiver too, as far as in M, if we just have, it's just as hypothetical, but if we have a police chief that does not want this type of facility in the city and he harasses this caregiver, does the caregiver have any, does he have any recourse against that? Is there, is this law, does this law, under the provisions, acts of the law, does it protect them against maybe just, um, somebody who's in our city that doesn't believe in this and that harasses them?
Well, I, I think there's a, several questions wrapped in there. This ordinance, I don't think, enables the city to do any other inspections that it would, that it wouldn't already have the right to do anyway.
Okay, so it just can't go in there and be like, I wanna count plants?
Yeah.
I think you could.
Yeah.
I think you could, and I think that's allowed, I'm not, I don't see where that's prohibited under the act. If.
If it was done politely.
Well, just, I'm just saying, what if it wasn't done politely and it becomes a harassment issue? Is there any type of protection for that caregiver?
I, I wanna be careful how I answer this. I, I think yes, I mean, I think anybody who feels they've been harassed has legal rights to pursue if they, if they want to.
Go pro.
Go pro, strap up.
Hey, Tim, does this, what happens if you have a warehouse, and it's subdivided into sections?
Oh, yeah, I, I'm sorry, I overlooked this, there is a, in the location section, four ninety-seven, there's distancing requirements, so if you look at.
A thousand feet?
Four ninety-seven B, you have to be a thousand feet from, and it's the Safe Schools statute, federal requires a thousand feet distance from any type of school. I've added childcare organization, place of worship, public or private park.
And an additional caregiver.
Importantly is the other medical marijuana caregiver, so, to the extent that somebody comes in and says, I want a special land use for a caregiver grow facility, you can't get another one within a thousand feet of that.
Do we have areas to support that in our community? Like, are there areas to support it without?
Right, and if you look at one oh two four ninety-seven C, I've got a fifty-foot distancing requirement from residential structures. Unfortunately, all of your industrial is bordered by residential uses, and looking through the zoning ordinance and the map to look at the setbacks for the various industrial setbacks and the different residential setbacks, fifty feet is probably on your low end. If you had an I-two building with a multiple family, you're gonna get a much bigger distance between the structures. The idea here is to put some type of distance between this type of grow facility and a residential. and a residential structure, to avoid any nuisance issues regarding odor, noise, light, anything else. Again, we're trying to minimize traffic, so I don't know that it's so much a traffic issue as much as just something that might, anecdotally, my information is that most of the time it's the odor related to these.
Those are sort of the same protections that you want to enjoy on a residential area from industrial of any nature, so.
Correct, correct. And then, one of-
I'm sorry, could I ask one thing?
Sure.
Because when we talked about that, just that thing that Mike was inquiring about, one thing that hadn't crossed my mind was, you know, you couldn't cohabitate with another grower or provider, can they cohabitate with another business entity in the same building? I, I guess if it was a secured location for the grow facility, you could still have other activity taking place in the same structure?
I, I didn't get an answer to this, but I did think of that concept. And I don't know whether the state department responsible for this would ever issue a registration card to a caregiver or a patient in the name of a business.
No, no, I don't mean this, just simply, okay, you have Bob's Pot over here, and you have, you know, Fred's Icing Store or something, you know, in the same facility that are separated by this security fence or something.
I, I don't see where we would prohibit that.
Okay.
In the same, say if it were a warehouse building, I don't know, as long as they can comply with the act and the additional requirements in this ordinance for the special land use, I think we're okay with that. Now, we may have concerns, and the planning commission would have, would have the authority to place conditions upon the special land use. You need to improve your security on this issue, or as to this location, or this common wall, or the entrance, or whatever it is.
Right, right.
They could place reasonable conditions on the approval, to address any concerns that they have that are related to governmental interest.
So that no, no shared entrance or something maybe, yeah, right, okay.
Yeah, I, I think those would all be very fact sensitive.
Thanks.
Going on to one oh two, five hundred, lays out the qualifying patient regulations. Again, a qualifying patient can use for their, cultivate, grow, and use for their own use within their own dwelling, up to twelve plants, and have the allowable amount of marijuana. They must comply with the building code, fire code, so if they were going to have grow lights or add any kind of additional plumbing, those have to be permitted and comply with the code. There is language requiring that they not create a nuisance. In both of these scenarios, there is language that deals with light, odor, noise, vibration, typical nuisance type things.
Now, can the police walk into their homes and count their plants? Like, do they have to be registered to grow in their own home?
I don't know the answer to that, but my, I'm not sure that would be the only reason for-
Like, if you're a registered, um-
You just have to be registered with the state.
Right, is that, does that go to our police department?
I think it goes to the state, but as far as the, I don't, I don't think it applies to qualifying users.
Privacy kind of a thing, too.
Because that's a privacy act, so.
But the state may have the right to do that, to check.
But our local police wouldn't have the right to check?
I don't know. I don't know.
Mr. Mayor, if I could comment? The, not only the local police, but no law enforcement agency is automatically advised of who has either patient or caregiver cards. The way that we would confirm whether somebody was a licensed caregiver or qualifying patient would, would be that, upon contact with law enforcement, if they presented their card, we could check by number to see if that card number matched up with their name, and if it was valid or not valid.
So say you had a house, and the neighbor was complaining about smell coming from the house next door, and you guys went out, and they came out on the front porch, and they said, they said, well, here I am a caregiver, or I, I'm a qualified patient, and I'm allowed to grow twelve in my house, and here's my card, and you verify that everything's good, do you just then make a courtesy, like you try and clean up the smell? Or are you allowed to walk in their house and check their plants?
We would ask for their permission to check for compliance with the Medical Marijuana Act, make sure they have a secure facility, to make sure that they have only the allowable number of plants. If they refused us entrance, which they could do absent a search warrant, we'd call our local prosecutor and say, here's, here's the facts that we're presented with, here's the probable cause, we have complaints, the officer himself smelled a very strong odor of marijuana, please sign the search warrant. So, then we come back with a search warrant, now they don't have a choice, they're going to have to let us come and see if they're in compliance with the Medical Marijuana Act. So it would be in their best interest if they are operating in accordance with the law, and they have a valid card, and we've been very reasonable, very polite in saying, we're here based on a complaint, can, can we please verify compliance with the act? They should do that.
And so should the commercial.
I wonder-
I don't think the commercial should have to be anything different than the residential. If there's no complaints coming out of that commercial building, there aren't people trumps in and out, there isn't anything, that man is doing his business, he doesn't have a smell, he doesn't have a problem, he doesn't have anything, they should not, our local police should not be able to go in there anytime they want and count seventy-two plants. So I think it should be for the same for both.
But I don't, I don't see a reason that they would do that.
I don't think they should be able to.
Well, what happens if it gets around-
It should be a simple search warrant, just like anything else.
Right, it will be, because if it gets around town, hey, this guy's giving out pot.
Then it's a search warrant, it shouldn't just be in, in here as a random act. Could be subject to inspection. It shouldn't be in there like that, it should only be, like he just said, the way the law is. I agree one hundred percent with that. I don't agree with the way it was written in here in M. Because you're doing one thing for one and one thing for the other. And these people are both under the same act, and they're both growing within their means.
If, if I could, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, that is not dissimilar from some of the fire inspection rules that would apply, that the fire department would have greater access to a commercial building than they would to private residence.
And, and they do have that access, they have the right, but the fire chief is going to go in there and look for fire things, he's not going to be counting plants. If he goes in there and there's plants where he can't even step, obviously that's a fire hazard. But I, I don't like the way that's worded, I just don't think that that's-
But there's so much potential to abuse this system. You know, you are relying on the word of an individual that they're only growing seventy-two plants in a warehouse.
And if they start growing crazy, you'll know about it.
No, how will you know if you're saying that they shouldn't have access at all?
I didn't say they shouldn't have access at all, they shouldn't have random access, it should be done through-
Probable cause should drive their going in, yeah.
Right, it's not, it's not-
So the fire department goes in there to, to check on a warehouse, and happens to say to the police, hey, you know what, we think there's more plants in there than seventy-two.
Then he goes and gets a search warrant from the judge, and then he goes in that way. He doesn't get to just knock on the door and say, hey, I'm here to count your plants, because today's Monday, and I wanted to count your plants today.
There's civil remedies to this as well, I mean, there's nuisance, you could, intimidation, harassment, I mean, there's all these things. I'm sorry, I, 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 um, obviously this is the act in the state of Michigan, but I don't want to be in a position where we're agreeing to allow these caregivers access into this city, and God knows how many plants are growing. I mean, you're taking upon, no, see-
You will know, you will know, it will over, it will over smell the area, it will-
Not if you're just growing, I mean, seventy-two plants, what's the difference between seventy-two plants growing in a warehouse and ninety? Do you think there's going to be a really big difference in the odor?
There might be. And like you said, if you see people coming in and out, I think, I think there has to be reasonable cause to go in there. But, like I said, the fire chief, he can go in to do his job, that's not a problem. And the fire chief goes in there, and he says, holy cow, there's this many tables, there's this many plants, there's this many that, he makes a, a thing, and then there's probable cause, and you go in. So you are going to have access, it's not just going to sit there forever because you do have-
So you're saying-
Building regulations, you do have fire code regulations, you know? I mean, I think the only person that's in there is just like any other business in this town, which this would just be a business like any other business in this town, would be our fire chief.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I would liken this, from a law enforcement perspective, to our right, under the law, to go in anytime they're open, and inspect a licensed establishment for a, not only state legal substance, but a national legal substance, that being alcohol. If you have a liquor license in the state of Michigan, the police have a right to go in at any time and do an inspection.
Look at your license, they make sure you have your license.
Well, also to look for liquor violations. I would think we should have the same right for a substance that has a lot more potential for profit and a lot more potential for abuse.
What do you do with your liquor, what else do you do with the liquor when you go in for looking for liquor violations? What is a liquor violations other than the license or serving to minors?
Well, that, that would be primary ones, it would be hours of operation, there could be any number of them, there's-
But you don't count liquor bottles?
No, we don't, but there's no requirement under the law.
The state's liquor commission, rather than from going to the party store.
I mean, I think there's a lot of information that he could serve you on a, on a random check of what he has in his building, I don't think, I don't think going in and physically counting at a random time is appropriate.
Then, why is there a limitation? Why is there a limitation on the number of plants?
Why do they limit the people who, why do they limit what they can, limit what they can have in their homes? There's a limit on both of them.
Right, but you're saying if you can't randomly check to see if they have that number, then why should there be a limit in the first place? There's no enforcement. There, there's, I mean, there's no, there's-
There just needs to be regulated enforcement.
There are civil remedies you can take for, if you believe that your enforcement's-
Yeah, we see how well that's working lately, not in this city. I just don't agree with it, I agree with, that it should be one for what's right for one is right for the other one.
Well, I mean, how much leeway do we have to make language adjustment?
After listening to the discussion, I'm not sure that this language does anything that the city doesn't already have the right to do. I think our constitution provides that you can, that the building code, building official, fire official, and police officers can enter this type of facility, just like any other business, under certain circumstances. If those circumstances don't exist, I, I don't know that, I, I guess, I want to be clear, I don't think the city has any intention of random spot checking. I think it's going to be a complaint-based issue. They're not going to go knock on doors for compliance.
But her point is that it doesn't say that, I mean, it's, it's left to being potentially arbitrary, so.
I mean, are we going to go into a pizza booth business and go through and count their pepperoni? I mean, nobody's going to do that, I mean, I, you say that he has access to other businesses, the police have access to go into businesses, why would they go into another business in this area? What, what for, what would they go into another business for? Unless there was a complaint or a robbery or-
Maybe a bootleg pepperoni going on out there, you know, so.
I said it as, I said it as just, you know.
I think maybe an analogous situation might be myosha, where they might, I don't, I honestly don't know the answer to this, but I think they probably have the right to spot and inspect a restaurant to ensure that the right placards are displayed, that there are safety mechanisms on the machinery in a business. I think they can do that without necessarily having a search warrant.
Right, and all that can be done from, and all that can be done from the front. All that can be done from the front of the building, they don't have to go back into the grow facility to, to get all that stuff, they don't have to. I just think there needs to be better language with that, I, I don't, and it's just to protect that caregiver too, from being harassed if you come into a community where the community doesn't welcome you. I don't want to see that person harassed when it is legal to do.
I, I can certainly look at the language, I mean, I certainly understand your position.
And I would like the language looked at, thank you.
You know, they always have the redress of this body as well. I mean, if there's, if there's outside of the civil approach, you know, we are here as well. So, I mean, if we think PD is end up, ending up overreaching, someone is, one of our businesses is being kind of manhandled, we can certainly end up bringing that to their attention, that we don't approve of that kind of behavior as well, so.
And I agree with that, but I think that this issue, there's very strong points on either side, and I think it takes people, sometimes their professionalism out of it, because there's such a strong feeling one way or another. It's not a pizza place, it's a pot place. And I think that, I think that the more we clarify, the better. We will be in our city, and we won't have to have that man coming, or person coming to counsel to say we're being harassed by the place.
I have way more philosophical concerns than practical concerns. I know that that's not going to end up being an issue here, but I understand your concern with the language, so. Now, the, the notion of, okay, when you do an inspection of a place where there's customers that are lingering about, it makes perfect sense that you're going to want to make sure everything is attended properly. You know, all the safety aspects of the facility are in line, and, you know, that they meet all the, what, what's deemed a normal of that kind of activity. If there's one guy that's in there, they were initially compliant, and you have no indication that there's anything otherwise going on, I mean, I really don't understand why there would be a great deal more activity being, why they would be scrutinized any more than what would present itself to, to be a perfectly legit operation. I mean, doesn't that stand to reason? I'm asking you, I'm sorry, Chief.
I, I didn't hear anything unreasonable in that statement.
So, and that, that's kind of the way I'm expecting it to go, but I, like I say, I do understand your philosophical language issue.
I do have a couple of other follow-up points, just from the qualifying patient. You cannot grow your twelve plants in an accessory structure, so no garages, no sheds, anything like that.
Oh, I thought that if it was protected, that, that that was all right. If it was lockable and stuff.
Well, it's winter, nothing's really going to last out there without heat.
Yeah, I mean, I had heard something where someone grew something, and the violation was that the top didn't have chain link on it or something, it was sort of like a fenced-in enclosure.
It was an old dog kennel or something.
Pardon me?
I think that involved an old dog kennel. I think there was a case involving this.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know, but I, I didn't know that that wasn't appropriate to be an accessory.
I mean, I think from a security, the, you know, the motivation there is the security issue. If it's away from the main structure, and outside of the main structure, it's harder to secure, you're less aware of what's going on. Also, in one oh two, five oh one, there are prohibited uses. So the cultivation and growth of more than twelve marijuana plants by a qualifying patient for his or her own use is prohibited in any zoning district except in the I-one, I-two, meaning you have to be a caregiver to grow more than the twelve plants. There are no medical marijuana dispensaries, cooperatives, joint grow facilities and so forth are prohibited. And that's, that's really it.
I know, that's what she has an issue with.
I, I would be interested to know how much availability is in our, our one, in our I-one and I-two? I would just like to know that.
What do you mean by availability?
Buildings existing, sitting there.
Yeah, I mean, are there places for these people to come in, I mean, could we get five?
They don't have to be built now.
No, they don't, but I mean, do we have areas to build five within keeping the distance from each other? Do we have the area to build four, do we have the area to build three? I'd just like to know that.
I can look into that, I do know, I do know the, uh-
Because you put like restrictions on a thousand feet here, a thousand feet here, fifty feet here. I'd just like to know, could our town take in five caregivers, could our town take in twenty caregivers before?
Well, as far as I can see, you got two locations, maybe on Mill Street, and then the Dixboro Light Industrial that is completely undeveloped, you know? You have underground in, so.
Yeah, but like, how many could you put in there, it's like, one?
I mean, there, I don't think you could go a thousand feet in that development and get another one in there.
I don't think so either, so possibly two? I mean, I just wanted to make sure we could at least get one before we did this. I mean, this would be worthless if we, like, oh, we did all this, but there's no room in our city for it.
Well, we're obligated to do it, whether there is or not, but.
I can look into it, I, I don't know how certain I can be, but I can give you a general idea.
Because I'm guessing there's one or two, but I'd like to just know if there's any possibility for more.
Is that Nick's the first reading then?
Well, we would need a motion to approve the first reading.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
For the discussion?
Further discussion?
Hi. Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. I'm remote controlled.
You finally wanted to say something when I asked. Okay, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Aye.
And you're going to look into that language?
I will review the language, provide you with additional information and look at the distancing requirement to determine approximately how many people could be located within the city given those distancing requirements.
Thanks, Tim.
I want to thank the planning commission for the hard work they had to put into this too, because I'm sure they just went around in circles trying to figure out how to do this. Right, Carmine? Just yours. Okay. Okay, let's move on to the purchase of a dump body replacement. This would be for two DPW trucks. And I did notice that we were getting in pretty rusty there and needy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. As you know, our DPW services the city from corner to corner and we do this using nine vehicles. That's three pickups, two mini dumps and four salt trucks. Although these pieces of equipment are very operational, pieces of equipment within the trucks are wearing out. And in this case, it, uh, it's the dump beds in the back, okay? One of our very large dual tandem salt trucks, uh, the bed is completely rusted out. We rebuilt it two or three times already with plate steel. And a 2007 mini dump that had a steel box on it that has rusted out due to salt spreading mainly. And even though we use salt in the winter, these trucks are still serviced and used throughout the summer and a lot of times it can't be used because of the wear and tear on that. So we've, uh, picked out the vehicles that were in worse shape. And what we've done is gone out and found out what it was going to cost to replace it. And we can replace two beds, one in the 2000 Volvo Salt Spreader, one in the 2007 F-350 Mini Dump. And this is a piece of equipment that you just don't find. A lot of companies that do it. We use a company called Napa Hide out of Flint, Michigan. And we can replace both of these, but they are expensive. The big salt truck's going to be eighteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars. And for the mini dump, it's eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty. But it's going to bring these trucks back to almost like new conditions, even though that salt truck is fifteen years old now. We still have quite a few years. We can still use that piece of equipment.
I understand you nixed purchasing a larger, uh, dump truck, so there's monies available.
That is correct. Uh, we did put into our fiscal year of this year money to purchase a large, uh, brand-new tandem salt truck. And the same thing happened to that that happened on that bit of that truck earlier this year. The Michigan, uh, discount went away. That price went up. At that time, instead of just let this money sit, we looked at it and said, why can't we go get a few of these other pieces of equipment right now? Get it free and up going to the future and we'll service our fleet as it is.
Okay.
That's exactly right.
Well, I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere 1575 Terrain Cut.
Nope, wrong one.
Apologize?
That's the other one.
Oh, I'm ahead of myself.
So number three.
They were backwards in the packet, the dump body.
Okay, so the, uh, two, the T-12 tandem, correct?
There you go. Yep.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Bob. Make the motion to approve the purchase of the replacement dump boxes for the T-12 tandem 2000 Volvo Salt Spreader at eighteen thousand eight hundred and six dollars. And the T-6 2007 F-350 Mini Dump at eleven thousand seven hundred and eighty for a total cost of thirty thousand five hundred and eighty-six dollars.
I'll support that.
Further discussion?
I have a question.
Harvey.
Uh, do we need to have a motion to suspend our purchasing policies to receive three beds?
We do, but I spoke to that in the fact that, Harvey, it's really hard to find companies that do this kind of-
I understand.
No, we just need to qualify. We're not bidding.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
For that very reason.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to make that part of your motion?
Yes, please, and-
My apologies there. I misunderstood.
Thank you, Harvey. Yes, and in that motion, I'd like to add that we will waive the bid process for three, three bids.
To the specific nature of vendors, yeah.
Exactly. Thank you.
I'll support them.
Further discussion? I think it's a good move. All right, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we're going to look at the purchase of a John Deere 1575 Terrain Cut, which, uh, with a comfort cab. Does that mean it's air-conditioned?
And heat.
And heat. Okay. And attachments.
Comes with a day spent package. Okay. On this topic, we're going to do the same thing. This piece of equipment we've had in-house since 2001, fourteen years. This is a seasonably used, a non-seasonably used piece of equipment. We use it year-round. We use it for mowing in the parks. We use it for brooming and cutting alongside the bike paths. We use it for snow removal in the winter. So we just change the piece of equipment that goes on the front of it, depending on what season it is, and we go for it, all right? It's been on, using it year-round. It's breaking down. Doug is constantly fixing it. We can take this opportunity to move forward and purchase a brand-new one of these that we will use it along with this piece of equipment until this one dies completely. They no longer make the 1445. They've gone to a slightly larger unit of 1575, but it still will service and do exactly the same thing.
And fit our bike path.
Absolutely. And sidewalks, okay? Things like that. Once again, on the three bids, we normally get three. We always use Bader &amp; Sons since it's a John Deere product. We went out to Foot Tractor, which is a Kubota dealer. And the third one is, uh, Weingartz. Weingartz recently lost the commercial contract to sell John Deere products. So we didn't have them as an availability this time, all right? The problem with the Kubota, the snow plow on the front of it, the box, four inches wider than our sidewalk. It may not seem like a lot, but we don't want to be tearing people's lawns up any more than we need to, all right? We take a close look at that. Our sidewalks are forty-eight inches wide. This is a forty-seven inch box here on the front and it's a great piece of equipment. We're going to do the same thing. Uh, we're going to use the money line that was put aside for that salt truck. And we can purchase this at a cost of forty-two thousand one hundred and five dollars and fifty-two cents from Bader &amp; Sons. And it should be available within four to six weeks.
So should we just have Lloyd give you the check that we got back from the, uh, MML?
That was for police cars.
That was for police cars.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of a John Deere 1575 Terrain Cut with comfort cab and attachments from Bader &amp; Sons for the amount of forty-two thousand one hundred and five dollars fifty-two cents and to waive the bidding process.
I'll support.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to ask, the attachments and all that stuff, are they compatible with each other? The 1445, yeah, that's very helpful.
We have an inventory of parts already.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
I've been very pleased with our, we've hired new, new, uh, people and I see enthusiasm. I see hard working going on among your staff, Bob. I think they deserve the best we can give them.
Ted, you've given us, uh, the council enough people in both departments now we can multitask to you. Sometimes three or four jobs at the same time, which is outstanding for the residents of our city.
I agree. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Now you can say thank you. Okay, to a point of, um, aid to the manager's report?
Certainly. Two quick items. Uh, I placed a letter from, uh, Road Commission for Oakland County on the council table. It's a letter outlining the annual meeting with, uh, local communities. And part of that, as part of that meeting, local officials are invited. The meeting is this Thursday at 2:00 PM in the Lyon Township offices. I will be attending. Uh, Mike Dargo will be attending, uh, one of our city engineers. Uh, Bob Martin will also be going. But certainly we would welcome, uh, council to accompany us and share any input that they may have with the road commission and the officials who will be present.
Hey, thank you. And?
And the other item, for the benefit of our viewing audience, just so they, uh, they don't think the police department is not being proactive. I made two separate contacts today with CSX Railroad regarding the crossing on Lafayette or Pontiac Trail at Lottie. Particularly the southbound side is getting bad. I'm seeing people veering out of their traffic lanes to avoid those potholes. So I am working from the city and the police angle on CSX. I encourage our motoring public and other city officials to, uh, go to the homepage on the City of South Lyon website, southlyonmi.org. And there's, on the mid-left-hand side of the homepage, there's a little railroad crossing icon that provides a contact link to, uh, register additional complaints with CSX. I think we need to do that because that crossing needs attention.
It's dangerous.
It, it, it is dangerous and the railroad definitely needs a boost before they'll do anything about it.
Any idea off the top of your head, uh, the traffic count we have through there in a day?
I'd be surprised if it wasn't twenty thousand plus, but I don't have an exact count.
And of course, it's something that we can't just throw asphalt in because it becomes a liability thing.
Well, two reasons. Uh, number one, liability in railroad property. Number two, it's a county road, so there's-
But it's our car.
The reason that we can't just do it, but I did want council and the public to know that I am working on it.
Thank you. Bev, any comments?
No, just welcome back.
Oh, thank you. Mike?
Um, yeah, our next rec, um, center, uh, community center meeting is, is coming Monday, I believe, at Lyon Township at 7:00 PM. Um, our Facebook page, uh, it's South Lyon Area Community Center. We do have a conceptual design up, um, for a possible, uh, rec center at, uh, McHattie Park. So we encourage everyone to take a look at that and leave your comments. Uh, we've been getting a lot of press. Thank you to the South Lyon Herald on this. Um, we are making phenomenal process, uh, progress in the last month. So I want to really thank my committee members. Uh, we've had a lot of interaction between Green Oak Township and Lyon Township in the last month that have been, it's been extremely positive. So hopefully this will keep on marching along. But, uh, we hope to have some more information regarding a scaled-down version of the costs sometime in the near future. Thank you.
Okay. Harvey?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Glenn?
Um, essentially, I'm glad that the weather is breaking. That's all I've got.
Why has it been bad? Aaron?
I'm good. Thank you.
Joe?
Uh, nothing tonight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I want to thank Joe for filling in for, uh, me while I was absent. Also, I can state that Lynn and I have been working a little bit together on, uh, we're going to have to come up with a proposal, folks, of either support or not support for the tax, uh, vote coming up. So that'll be coming up in the next meeting or two that we'll have to make a decision. Do we want to support or oppose it?
The sales tax?
For the gas, yeah, for, uh, the road thing. And, uh, so just kind of heads up on that. Okay, now with the, uh, this ends this regular session. We do have to go to a closed session to- How do you want to word it?
Sue into section 8H to discuss three separate items.
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Okay. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, roll call vote, all right.
Oh, that's right, yeah.
Kivell?
Yes.
Kinkowski?
Yes.
Rizzi?
Yes.
Wallace?
Yes.
Vino?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, for the sake of our TV audience, this particular meeting lasted one hour and twenty-five minutes.